...doing out of professional courtesy. So we're here to talk about senior citizen exemptions, well, people with disabilities as well. When you look at here, in order to qualify, it must be generally sixty-five years or older, and with respective certain income limits. And with the disabilities, they actually have to provide substantial limits for major activity, and it must be noted through documentation in order to qualify for that. With respect to why we're doing it, Livingston County adopted this past fall. And in doing so, our village has also adopted this income limit. And what we're looking at is to match Livingston County's limit up to fifty thousand dollars. And just to share with you how Livingston County came up with this number that they came up, which is different than Monroe County, is the cost of living adjustment for social security benefits from two thousand four through today. So you can see the differences in this, you can see where we were. And moving forward, so in essence, it was zero to twenty-eight thousand four hundred would get you up to a fifty percent discount. Now you're starting, zero to twenty-eight thousand would give you a fifty percent exemption of your taxes, all the way down to if your income was lower than thirty-six thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars, a five percent exemption. So what does this mean for our school districts? So senior citizens wise, this is beyond Livingston County. We provide this for all district residents. So it's ninety-seven senior citizens would qualify as we know it today, and six with disabilities would qualify. So the board has several options. Typically, you can take no action, which means you can take the status quo. You can postpone and revisit next school year, or you can adopt anything between the least and the maximum. Again, my recommendation will be the Livingston County, as you can see here. We have not changed this since two thousand nine, two thousand ten school year, looking at fourteen years ago with respect to the income. Any questions or comments? So any questions or comments? Very good? Maybe? So, Dave will qualify just a few years. The only thing that I would, I just want to make sure you understand, obviously, the burden, very similar, we did the veterans exemption, will be transferred to the rest of the taxpayers. According to our town assessor, it would be minimal impact to our taxpayers as we know it. And again, the difference is, we know where the income was when it was up to twenty-eight thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars. Moving higher, we don't know that information. It's not shared with us. However, according to our town assessor, it'll be minimal, up to that thirty-six thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars.
They have to also follow forms, right? They have to be engaged.
Absolutely. They have to, they have to show evidence of their income and so forth if they have disabilities. Full-fledged documentation. It's not our decision, it's done at the county level. And like I said, we will, we may have people in our town of Weakland and so forth may have concerns because the rest of Monroe County went to as high as fifty thousand dollars. But Livingston County did not. Either way, if you were to approve this this evening, our most neediest in our community, our senior citizens about sixty-five years of age and are disabled, that would be my recommendation. Just to give you an idea, the impact thirty-eight, senior citizens in town of Weakland, Aragona, there's four, Chi-Li, there's seven, with also one disabled, and Leroy, there's two seniors, Kalonia, there's forty-six, and then with five disabled. Any questions? Right. Good evening. I call this board meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, on the nation of God, with the full, complete, and just as power. Thank you for joining us this evening. Please be advised in the event of a fire emergency and a horrible sound. Please know all emergency exits can evacuate all the way from the building. At this time, we request everyone please turn your cell phones to silent. Thank you for your cooperation. additions, releases, and changes to the agenda that's been announced. Yes, under new business approval by the state trip, fifth grade class, passed twenty-two eighty-eight. Your personnel, upon head of a mentor, also approval of school to work students. Thank you. And a motion for the consent agenda one for none, please. Can you read it? And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any call, say nay. I can provide communication in first line, Mr. Mulligan.
Yes, you see, your board had it at all varsity winter sport teams, at the New York State Scout F and T Awards. You see the middle school and high school honor roll, end of the first semester for high school, and the second quarter for middle school. Physically, we're very close to where we were last year, we're in three percent points. This continues to do well. Do you see many headlines in your backup notes regarding coming the honors individually or collectively our student body has created or earned since our last meeting?
Thank you. And you have no guests in the board that have signed up for public? Superintendent's report, what's on our first semester student performance?
Yes, at this time, I'll have Dr. Chanel board with respect to our first semester
Evening. Are Regents' exam results, I'm asking, is that, is it, is somebody working on, if you can go back, we'll start local exam, I just wondered. So in your packet, you were able to take a look at our January exam reports. So the first thing that I would share with the board is that we are fully back, you know, like at the middle of high school. What you are seeing happen right now is that teachers are teaching full curriculum. We came back into this school year with the expectation that we face students running and our expectations for it, back at the top of what we had most expected. What you would find inside the walls of the school, and I'm sure if you're a parent or child that is attending, especially in the high school, but certainly in the sixth and twelfth, who are maybe feeling some of the stress in your home home around academic expectations present, and kids really working hard to try to meet those expectations. I just want to take this moment and say that as the principal of the building, I'm very proud of our educators and how hard they're working. It definitely has been a tighter summer for them to really be pushing kids, spending extra time with them. Their income base, making sure that we're running a lot of interventions, making us lots of opportunities to sort of close some of the academic gaps that they walked into this school year feeling. So when you're looking at this data set before I switched over to the Regents' exams, I did want to draw your attention to Algebra I Extended. Typically, when we are talking about Algebra results, I tell you there's certain Regents' exams we just need to a little bit more attention to because they're the baseline, so I want to make sure that we're really dwelling those, so that we know that our students are graduating from high school after they have the Pi. So Algebra is the easiest of the math Regents' exams for us to get through. We like to see that Biology, the looking environment one, well under kids' house. And again, we'll be looking at United States history and the English eleven. So I just want to draw your attention to Algebra I Extended, because I think this is going to give you just a little bit of insight when you switch over into the Biology, because I want to make sure that we are really comparing what this looks like with exams that we have within our control right now, and what it looks like going into some of the state level exams, the gaps that we're seeing. So Algebra I Extended, twenty kids enrolled, fourteen students pass the exam, six of our students failed that midterm exam for Algebra I. Algebra I Extended is not done, it has extended to the kids don't take the Regents' exam, that until we get to June. So just wanting you to see that, and of course, we're typically, when we're recording out on Algebra, we don't kind of have a lot of failures. I just wanted you to get a sense of what these academic gaps are looking like right now, the teachers are sort of fighting against, it's not our normal to see that. So our freshman class in particular right now, I think the transition to the last semester has been hard for them. But I also think that just really setting those learning expectations and holding them to what that wants to look like is probably the great level of this experience we're struggling for us at the moment. So you'll see, as we go down from AP level courses, you'll see that some of the things that our expectations would be kind of at where we want to work. And if kids don't know how to grind, you're grinding, teachers are certainly helping them. And if kids are kind of struggling with that level of pressure, you'll see a lot of intervention involved. But again, you're seeing insights being explored. You can scroll down just a little bit for me, just so that we can get a look at the rest of them. Did you guys have any particular questions about any of the data on this? Oh, family exam, yes, yes, thank you. We can switch now to the tabs as Regents' exams. So you know that Regents' exams, we're wearing our hat on these uncourse assessments, we'd like to see that our kids are doing better on the Regents' exams than they did in their core scores. So we'd like to see that as educators, we're sort of aligning that when we're looking across the market periods, where the market period grades doing a good job predicting what those Regents' scores are going to look like for us. So we'll take a look at Algebra. The Algebra set that you're seeing there, again, a group of ninth graders, two kids not getting through the exam. I will tell you that they didn't pass the exam, so there is a data point in here that I probably should have added, so I just want to explain to the board that the state of New York does still have what is called the ability of a child to pass the class on an appeal. And an appeal used to be something that was only available to students with disabilities, or only available to children who were going to change their diploma status, not to a local diploma. The state basically opened the appeal process up, and they opened it last year, and are reading it open for all of this year. And so the appeal process basically says that any student on a Regents' exam who scored between a fifty and a sixty-four passes the course and actually have the Regents' exam credit by appeal. So overall, when you're looking at the matrix, there are twenty-six students across the high school that you are currently seeing off here as like part of a value rate, they didn't pass, because honestly, our reset button right now for us academically has to be that we, our expectation is that kids are passing Regents'. So when you're looking at the data set, you're going to be able to see this data consistently compared from year to year to year going forward, because I am not counting for the kids who pass the Regents' exam by appeal. You're really just looking at a very clean number of kids who got the sixty-five or higher. So let's take the Biology exam, for example. You see, looking environment, twenty-nine students enrolled in course, fourteen pass the Regents' exam, that's with the sixty-five or higher, fifteen students failed the Regents' exam. Of the fifteen that failed the Regents' exam, all but two received passing Regents' credit by appeal. So they scored within the fifty to sixty-four range. So they're still on track in terms of like what we like to talk about, that they're on track graduating from high school, they actually picked up the course, and they picked up the Regents' credit, but they did so by appeal. So as dismal as that number looks to you, it's not going to have that level of impact on graduation.
So those appeal options aren't available, or you have NA?
Actually, we just don't, we, they are available, actually. The state has put them available straight across the board. So where you're seeing the Algebra, the NAs, those are our students with disabilities that would need to use an appeal. We have a couple that need the appeal. So I want to say the Algebra II in particular, and again, Algebra II is the gatekeeper math assessment. There are two kids, I believe off the top of my head, there are two kids that did not get the sixty-five on the Algebra II, but they did get between the fifty and the sixty-four. So they're still going to pick up the Algebra II exam credit by appeal, which means they're still going to qualify through the Regents' examination as the requirement, which they need all the other criteria. So typically, at this level, the only time we are talking about appeals recently added the column to students with disabilities and passing rates, because we've always been able to give them a lower passing rate on Regents' exam, because they have the individual situation plan, so we've always tracked that in our data set. The appeals are something that we've not really tracked in our data set. So by leaving the data set clean, so that when you look at it again next year, or even in June, and for years to come, we want to make sure that we're watching that passing rate of forty-eight be a real passing rate. The appeal process for students to score between fifty and sixty-four is going to disappear in August of twenty-three. So that, that's something that our kids still have a safety net from the state of New York, as schools are trying to get back on the COVID. But we want to make sure that we are looking at our real numbers, because that's our target. Questions?
I was wondering if you ever said today, did I see if this is not all of our students in the high school that has that matchup? Or are you looking at a number remaining that is increasing to you, students may retest or use the exact model, and then have direct?
That's a good point, I forgot to say that. We were never looking at a whole data set until we get to June, and then all of our students enrolled in any of these classes. Where most schools don't have this level of data from January Regents', they might just have a couple of kids that are retaking the Regents' exam in January, there are a few of us that are giving a full data exams, but like that is not for the norm. So this is about, for most of our teachers, this is about half of the load that they will Questions?
Yeah, I expect, the world to attend, one of the things that Dr. Chanel and her team will do is vote for buy intervention for all students who did not go through it, she has a plan for all of them. Class retake, resumption, summer school, whatever the case may be, there's a plan included for them.
And winter content specialty.
Volker, Wyre, a couple of team five members.
We want our team five. I'll, I'll do the quick.
I'll just begin with a hang of a backdrop on this, and I'd actually talked to the board, it was pretty, talk about who, science standards is different. One of this has been conversation for most of this year, because we have, uh, the new science standards are requires the teachers really teach science in a way that directs us to make sure that, uh, one of the things that we like to, but it's not a new thing, we'd actually probably talked about it, I would say in the high time here by three or four different times, or fifth grade, there's games that we want to teach one subject, rotate preparation for the middle school, which is, I taught it that way as an elementary teacher years ago, and then we had different groupings, so this is something that's not new in the elementary school. But what we are seeing is this would be advantageous for preparation for sciences, where we have someone that would be dedicated to just teaching the science standard, to rotate through this math and science. I'm not going to, all the thunder here, so we have some presentations here, but right now, we have, uh, Jamie Harmon is presently at fifth grade, Mr. Leonard will be joining the fifth grade next year, because we put it out to the staff, and he had an interest in teaching the science. And tomorrow, we're going to be in the interview process to try and interview the other fifth grades, opening as well as special ed teacher. We're kind of building a team, so it sounds real early, but it's not. Uh, we are going to be in the process of talking to parents about having parent-teacher conferences, and very often, it's like, what does it look like at the next grade level? We want to prepare our teachers for it. So everyone in the elementary school, this is, this is not a new thing, and it's not really a new idea, but I, I'm going to give it, I'm going to turn it over to Jamie Harmon and Kyle Leonard, and they're going to kind of go through the line, and then we'll, and we'll have questions, question, answer period, again, if you have any questions on it, but I'm going to turn it over to them, because they'll be able to.
Why?
You have to be close to the bike for it to stop.
I was, you're not shy. No, I'm not. So I've been in fifth grade, this is my fourth year now, and he had to teach all four content areas, math, ELA, science, and social studies. What we're finding, and what I'm finding in, um, in our meetings, our grade level meetings, is that we're having a difficulty getting in this science and social studies and doing that justice. Um, like Dave said, we have that exam coming up, it's not just about the exam, it's love science, they love the hands-on exploration of it, and it's something that, um, they will get more of if we go to this podcast session. So, um, we look at it as it's not an easier way to teach, it's just giving us a chance to be experts at one subject. And the kids would, they love to switch classrooms, we need rotations, so it's going to give them experiences, it's going to give us experiences, to be able to, um, structure our lessons, to be able to differentiate, to be able to have consistency across how math is taught, how ELA is taught, and how science is taught. So one of the things we've heard in discussions with the middle school is that how, if we talk with them throughout the year, how can we get the fifth grader ready for the middle school? This will definitely help them do that, be able to get the kids used to rotating classrooms, a little schools have to different teachers. At this point, they've been in the same classroom with the same teacher all day long since pre-k, so it's good to have them exposed to other teachers, other teaching models, and the model we're proposing is that one of us would do math, and would do ELA, and science. So we would start our classes with a homeroom, um, that's when they would begin their day, we would take attendance, and, um, we would also work with our homeroom students during mid-time in readers and writers workshop. So it's a little bit different from the middle school setting.
Explain the word, kind of what that is?
Oh, so when is, um, what I need? So basically, kids would go for reading support, math support, um, we were talking about during that time, even if they need to finish up the science lab, because in this new science curriculum, and, um, hours, they're going to have to log their hours in lab hours, they're going to have to show that they have so many hours. So, um, we would rotate that, we would be able to offer support for math, ELA, and science, social studies during that time. And, um, each teacher would be responsible for grading students in their subject area, and we would have to improve those rates with the report cards, and we would also confer with our whole grade level as far as learning behaviors for each, um, subject area.
Sure, I'm a teacher. I've had some experience at the middle school, I taught, uh, in Carolina, where were you? Neil? You're, sorry, I'm serious. For me, I'm teaching science and social studies, so I'm just really switching back, I have these parts here, so I prefer to lay out. I did, that's it. This is nice, you're separate, because every, second. But I, as Jamie pointed out, I did, I offered you a lot to, ask for doing it, I, I'm going to do it. You for one subject, testing of your project manager, or the strong, switch from one to the next, which is science, which is way, so, science lab, I would, that's, very cool.
Um, as far as parent-teacher conferences, I know that's a cornerstone at elementary level, um, the classroom teacher or the teacher record would conduct those, and the content area teachers would provide that, homeroom teacher with any concerns. And as always, the parents are always open to reach out to the team, we would consider the team, we would have a common planning at least once or twice a week, where we would be able to address concerns, and parents would be able to reach out and schedule a meeting with us if needed. So here's what we're hoping, we're hoping that Kyle would do science and social studies, I would be willing to do math, the new teacher we're looking for, ELA, and then the special education teacher, which is a little bit different, um, they would travel from room to room, so they would be responsible going with the co-teacher to ELA, to math, and to science and social studies, to be able to, um, provide students with that support that they need. Here's a draft of the schedule.
That was, well, the draft schedule was. Have it as, yes.
So here we have, it's the same, the same length of the day, each block is, um, set up for a fifty-eight minute block, so math, ELA, and science and social studies would all have a dedicated time of fifty-eight minutes. And we would also be able to incorporate resource room for those kids who have that on their IP plan, be able to provide support right before lunch, lunch, and then we would have our with time that we talked about, and, um, introduce a reading and writing workshop three days out of the week for the kids. So it would be something different for them, they would be going to library, not as a homeroom, but they would kind of be mixed, which would be a nice way to kind of intro them into doing that at the middle school as well. So, um, it would definitely give us more time in the day to be able to accomplish the science and social studies, especially now, the kids that we use, they're great, the kids love them, but they're messy, which is what they love the most about them, and, but it's a lot of setup, it's a lot of take-down, and when we only have forty-five minutes now to do it, that cuts out of the instruction time. So being able to leave that setup there and dedicate that fifty-eight minutes would be huge.
That will also keep band and chorus as part of the student day, so that's what you kind of see, creative, one fifty, end of the day, that has to be done, we have students that are in band and chorus, some are just in band, and some are just in, so that's where, um, the reader and writer workshop is, bringing that, right? Those are not participating in band or chorus on a given day, have their whole road be of a spot.
And it also leaves the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday for kids who aren't in band, aren't in chorus, or aren't going to that readers and writers workshop, who are available to be able to pull them to a band or chorus. or aren't going to that readers and writers workshop, who are available to be able to pull them to a band or chorus.
I like the idea. Um, question. So as you're sort of moving down from elementary model where there's a teacher, where there's your kind of project, would there be, in a science degree, like the homeroom teacher would be a part of that family?
Yes.
But maybe not subject related?
Correct.
So let's stay that way.
Yeah, so the, the homeroom teacher would be the teacher of record. They would be in charge of doing attendance in the morning. Um, we also were talking about how we would be able to put into school tool attendance for each subject. So that way, kind of like they do for middle school and high school now. So that way, if they do miss a lab or they do miss, you know, we can look back and say, oh, you know, Johnny has, he misses his lab today, Kyle, we've got to be sure that he gets pulled in to get those, those lab hours.
The thing is, when you bring that up, is there's about three hours. Or they're, they're going to be subject... Have your homeroom teacher in front of those two, like, follow your other person, kind of switch. The other part of the day, so I wouldn't say it's like a middle school, but it's kind of... Words, not that special. So it's step and then around.
Yep. Um, what if any challenges, you want to take the first year and, um, help them work for it?
Um, I would say just getting used to this model and getting the kids used to that. The nice part about incoming fifth grade is that it's a small group. There's only 16 in each section now. So it'll be nice to be able to, kind of, be able to manipulate and move that around. Um, just being able to make sure that we have the communication piece and that we're able to be in a common planning period. And, um, so the ELA, math, and science and social studies can be on the same page as far as behaviors, and that sort of thing. Which right now, in the schedule, there's two of those throughout the week. Um, both have Mondays, so that would be where we could plan for the state. Okay, Tuesday, here's what we need to do, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Um, but those are the biggest concerns, yeah.
Um, having that someone, a child who's one in this, this would give him a light up. It's like, he would not have as many differences.
Yes. Yeah. And it, it is hard because they're, by this point in the year, they're so comfortable with each other, and they're so comfortable with the teacher, that I, I find they get, they get re- re- fast. So they don't, we've talked about it. They either drag their heels because they don't want to go to middle school, and they just want to stay now. They either cruise along because they're comfortable, or they're like, mm, no. They're high flyers and they're just ready to go, like, send me now. So I think this model will help them more comfortable. A lot of the questions we feel at the end of the year is, what if I get lost? What if I don't get to my class in time? What if my, what if my locker isn't open? What if I can't get things there? So I think it will ease that transition for them and those anxieties that they feel that they build, that build up towards the end of the year for them also.
I do have to say, like, now with our fifth, those six mentor program, seeing that is layered on top of our mentalizing is like, heaven sent me. I think that'll be really set up for us. And then we talked about transition, like, next steps, fourth grade go fifth. When the fifth graders are busy with their new mentors, we'll be able to have that space available to show that and to in-house, like, mini orientation for our fourth grader.
Right.
I mean, they already know the teachers, they'll know Kyle, they know Miss Harmon, you know, they're very close, the fourth and fifth grade anyway. But I do think that, I think that establishes time and, that's already in the books for the mentor program. We can layer fourth grade in, into our own little...
It'll be invaluable.
Yeah. So the next steps would be a letter of introduction of this, you know, this new setup for our fourth grade families at our next, um, school. So we have a few draft, uh, letters already made that kind of take our powerpoint in another form. And then, parents that come by and we march, and they're asking all the questions.
That, that's the, that's the communication part. And they teach you we're answering questions.
And that's why we were thinking now is a good time because of the parent-teacher conferences coming up. That's just, the natural question is, well, where are you seeing my child going this year? Who's going to be the best fit? So if they know what's, what's happening, they have this information, and then that will prepare them for kind of these preparing anxiety as well.
I would like to say, thank you. Sorry, yeah. It's much easier to have an in-class, same thing, our, the weeks, first class. By the time you did, you're good.
And it's... I'm kind of excited, there was one thing David mentioned. He's like, well, it's not really the easier model. I was like, coming from a phys ed background, like, this is what we do. We do three lessons, you know, and we, we make those changes and make those adjustments. And it's always nice to be able to get to know all of the kids too. I mean, you still have your homeroom, but to get to know their strengths and weaknesses and be able to communicate that with, you know, another grade level. Or it can kind of help us find their strengths and weaknesses as well. And, you know, if a kid's really strong in science, but struggling in, you know, ELA, maybe we incorporate some more ELA into that science because that's where they, that's where they excel. So that's another way we can kind of, that, make that, um, thinking that will be, the kids will enjoy it, they'll like it. And, um, I think that we're definitely looking forward to this.
Uh, we kind of laid out how many, how long they're saying, how long they say they're taking. How long they think are two seconds. It's funny, they are taking a little bit longer. So what I think is we're going to just lay it out in good, and lay out the kind of study, science, and then lay out the kind of study. Typically, what's happening in elementary school is science and then, you know, science and social. I'm thinking it's going to break out the same, like that, from a teaching standpoint. There might be shorter ones that you could... But I think coming up with a graph like Kyle was talking about in the summer, saying this is what... And then see how it actually holds out. Because what, what's happening is they have the science units. Typically, this is not a new thing in elementary school. They always take too long, uh, to get through them all. There's a lot of setup to the new inquiries, the kids love it. I love teaching science, I would always teach science, but then I'd, then I'd be rushing to... It goes back thirty, if this goes back to the history of elementary, trying to get all the subject areas. They also have a win time that's going to be scheduled, they're going to, where there's, what I need time, the kids are going to get pulled out for math and ELA. But there's also an opportunity enrichment activity during that time. Um, so there's going to be, I think the schedule's flexi- flexible enough to do all of this. Really, what really is going to come down to this is the development of this team the next two years. Um, and then really, having this team together on the schedule of curriculum and working on that. I have done this, and I've switched out of it in my career as a teacher and as a principal. I've seen it some ago, I've seen it happen several times. Now we share that the thing that's going to make it work well is how well the team clashes together and how well they work. If that happens, it really is a wonderful thing. That does, and then, as we say, hopefully, we have, we have to continue. I think we build a great team. I was very forthright when we popped it off. And I do think we have to, right, people start this, and now we have to hire a few more people and then make that happen. Which is kind of nice for your, your company. Open mind and this, we're trying to, I think it... Yeah, I have, uh... That's important.
Just kind of find your own team members. But I can speak to the, the science kits. I know there's some now, it's just the one lesson Dave came in and observed the other day. It was lesson four, but it's one of four days. And that's four days if you can get 45 minutes solid time. So realistically, to cover all of that material in 30 minutes, it's maybe six or seven days. And that's just one lesson out of 18 or 19 we're supposed to cover with that pool. And the kids, they do love it, but like, we're dealing with, for example, triple beam balances. You have to go over, how do you read a triple beam balance? How do you use it? They haven't been exposed to that before. So just being able to have the exposure to kind of play around with that before they actually have to do the work in the kit that they're asking them to do is a huge, that's a huge undertaking as well. Um, measuring things in a graduated cylinder, it's, you would think that that's, that's easy, but some of them don't know. They don't know what the markings are. And it's a great crossover to, I mean, we talked about volume, and that's what's coming up in math, so it's a good pre-teacher to, to that. But there's a lot of lessons that they say two days, three days, end up doing five days, six days, just because of the setup, the takedown, and the amount of time to, to have to spend on that. So having that dedicated time will definitely be huge.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, old business. Number one, board policy revisions of the banners. Resolve the board education upon recognition of superintendent. Prove the revisions for board policy numbers, 7421 sports banners.
I'll make it.
Let's dial that aside. Uh, discussion.
Uh, the board policy committee that asked Monday to review this, it's two options. Actually, three, one, keep it the same. Second one is provide greater flexibility for those that have, actually have to purchase the banner. And then the very restricted one, which the committee felt was necessary, so that's received.
So is Israel, to the church, is there one option there? That the, will go forward with the incline, and the, that can be like a sword by sword decision? Or will alternate exit?
I would imagine all of them will be uniformed. Possibly, BM one top, the greater center, vice versa, or one or the other. Yes, they would look, they will look... Thank you, any other questions?
I guess if we're going to...
Just figured down the road with the CM, they want to just use the CM or just...
You have to switch all of them.
Well, I was saying with the creation of them. So like hypothetically, we have a new sport team. And we have to create that banner, we already, we would use designs that are already created. If they were going to change them out, 15 years from now, maybe they could find a team. It may side the scope of CM, as a rating.
Yep. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any votes say aye? Question period. New business. Number one, you can't use this company. So you guys have in the back, both, uh, old Mr. Malasani presented and, um, those that I had in math from my past that I took at the conference. So, um, as I understand, this is not a matter of a whole, or motion, this is better for friends. We want to continue to do what we have done, or get any information that's time to mention. So anybody want to share your thoughts? For this. And then, all of you, uh, just...
I think, Chris, I think it provides a lot of value to the community. It's a stressful thing to be a candidate in an audience and, and I, I think that kind of support position where you're going to be put in uncomfortable, accepting of the responsibility. I don't know, but, um...
I would just ask that... Our chair is going forward. Only last year, some of the stuff in public forum...
But it's leading into it.
Yeah, leading into it. So, again, I think we've already addressed that, just enforcing the basic rules we have now. We won't run into that.
So we're just checking the roster. As our, as you go through classes, you know, there's a few questions. Eric, the moderator, has asked, like, probably, I think it's seven or any questions that you consider candidates to prepare for, not knowing which ones are yes, but that, why do you want to be a board? Or just after... Project presentation? Or active board meeting? At the next. Anything else? Anything say? Now, number two, presentation of administrative project priorities.
I like this one. It's wonderful time. Okay. Um, I'll present District Line. So you'll see that most of our asks are, our carryovers are fairly the same going in from last year, this year, into next year, to be honest with you. Uh, our collaboration with BOSI's is still strong, and our instructional support and development needs is through that COSER 526. We do pay a base fee. What we are asking for this year is to add an additional $6,000 to support us with exactly what we were just talking about in the next generation science standards. We really need their collaboration. Becky has been working with the U of R to bring them in to support us with professional development. They're doing coaching and unit development with the middle and high school science teachers. And we're also considering having, um, our fifth grade teacher join once he gets his curriculum kind of laid out. So that's, uh, the big ask for us with COSER 526. Um, continuing the summer institute at the elementary school. You see how that's broken down, K5, uh, we'll start planning that in a few, in a month or so. So we'll be getting going on that, is another successful year of the summer institute. We run all of that through our BOSI's COSER. And then our mentor program is typically around $10,000 that we also run through there. Already at the elementary school, we'll be looking for a handful of new teachers and then new mentors, and then whatever, uh, middle and high school needs. So that number may go up just a little bit based on how the tides turn as the year goes on. All right. Another spot that, um, we get support from BOSI's is these, these two COSERS right here, Model Schools and Ready For. They're really enrichment-driven and science-based, STEM-based, uh, computer-based. Uh, they have a whole department through the library systems that works with our teachers that bring in very, very cool activities. We pay for 10 days per building. BOSI's comes in and sets up experiences for our students. Um, some grade levels use it more than others. For instance, I can speak to the elementary. For our kindergarten teachers, they rent a lot of the activities from them. They have a catalog, and we can rent through the Ready For COSER. Um, and then in grades four and five, I believe, definitely in fifth grade, they come in and they put in full experiences for a day. They'll do rotations like they were talking about, where they mix up all the kids, and they have these STEM experiences that go in conjunction with their science, um, units. And then we also have... And then we also have them coming into our library and they've been working really closely with Mary Burns to do, um, podcasts and, um, ways to make their book talks come alive. So it's been really neat to watch. So that's the COSER for there. Continue our replacement plan for Chromebooks as we are one-to-one. You'll see that we're looking to replace based on their end-of-year, or end-of-life expectancy, I guess it's called. Uh, so we'll be rolling over two grades per year. And then, um, we'll be using BOSI's again, that COSER that we were talking about before with that additional six thousand dollars. Now that we spent this entire year, continue to spend it on science review, we do need to put some money behind the things that we've discovered and the things that we need support in from, uh, to help us like raise our science bar. So we'll be using the collaboration with the U of R and BOSI's to do that. And then our upcoming curriculum review, looking into next year, will be in the area of literacy. That'll be a District One thing. Elementary school, it's for both the one and the all of our big asks. Continue on this one or do you want to?
We're asking, we're asking for continued support and fund the additional extracurricular opportunities. Uh, during the pandemic, we had tremendous, I mean, it really changed after-school programs and our extracurricular stuff where now we have, we used to have page turners, elementary student council, chess club, and ukulele club. Now we've added Girls on the Run, K-two creativity club, three-three-five Lego club, building club, virtual reality club, and art club. We have, I mean, we have so many things that the kids actually have to start choosing. So it's a wonderful problem. Uh, we've been very well attended. We probably have about sixty kids per program. Uh, it's offered, we actually have to offer it in separate sessions because of the popularity. We ask you to continue funding that. The other thing that we would ask to continue funding for is the chess club tournaments. Our students are back into that. Last year they were back into it. We asked you to continue to fund that. There are also, uh, we put ten thousand dollars in for tickets and admissions for a curtain-up program. Uh, I don't know if you're gonna need this, but it's better than the budget than ask for it than to not. And what it is, is we have our kids go to the Rochester Broadway Theater. This year they're gonna go see Aladdin. Uh, this year somehow, and I've never seen it happen, they funded a great portion of that this year. Usually it's pretty expensive, but they funded a good chunk of it. We're probably able to take it just out of our, our own budget and have a small fee for a student to pay. Typically, uh, it would be fifty dollars per student, it'd be about twenty-seven hundred dollars for our students to go. Um, but I would say funded, what I want to, it went away. And what they did is they would give the kids a theater experience and then they come in and teach about the theme. And then they would give a backstage show to the kids and show how it's all pulled off. It was a really cool program for the kids. It went away during the pandemic and now it's starting to come back. So I would ask that you continue to fund that. Uh, we are using our visiting experts program. We have Sheri Robinson in this week with our fifth graders and we'd like to continue, uh, with our fifth graders. And they have extended into fourth grade in years past, so that may, I don't know if that'll continue. Uh, but right now, I'd like to leave it as an option. Right now, we got it set for this year. Um, also, uh, just bringing in the performers back to our school. We have two, uh, different performances come. This was, uh, this was really, it got damaged during the pandemic and a lot of the industry around the performers that come into school, they went away. Um, I think they're revising, I think they're reimagining things and they're having different performers. But we really, we got away from that. A lot of the performers that I used to know, used to go to people. I think they retired, got different work. It's just, it's changed the makeup of that. But we do like to have two or three performances come in and then we balance them with ours. Uh, we balance them with science or character education. We try to do something that's kind of fun for the kids. Uh, we have two of them planned. We have another one that's a possibility. We'd like to continue to fund that. Oh, my favorite.
This one is a
Actually, we're doing well on both. These are actually, we're making headway. They have been up there, uh, like the elementary auditorium. It's actually, Bob and I were talking about it. It was probably thirteen years old, right? Maybe a little more than that. So it was, but what's happening is we're coming to the end of the lights of the equipment. We had, just recently had an amplifier that blew. Uh, when, uh, Jordan was here, he kind of went back there, fixed it, and we were able to work on one amplifier. Now, now we got it fixed and it sounds better, which is a great system in the elementary school. But also things like the house lights and the stage lights, they're older. I mean, they're different setups. It's not the LEDs that you see, it's the old systems. And we have some of them that just need updating. And also we have a projector, uh, that we use on the stage here. Uh, we really need something that's more like this. Since you remember the board meetings and you had it up on the stage and it kind of looks funny. Well, we're living with that. And we'd like to get something similar to that on a new presentation. So it's really just updating that space.
Right now, we're not even using the projector. We're using an active so we're using a, a teacher board to bring in a
And it really is a great system. That's one of those areas that's kind of neat is you pull those seats up, you go above and in there. Um, it's actually a wonderful, like a whole, a whole great level space for the whole presentation. You could, it could be a teaching station. Um, and if we have that, I think it would be a powerful thing. Something like a fifth grade, I could picture going in there and doing a whole thing. A whole lessons on the thing. It's really one of the only spaces we have in our building. Um, the classroom furniture, we are making headway on that. And it's actually, the pandemic actually helped us with this. Uh, so we did, uh, we replaced some of the student furniture in the two, high-grade levels. They have new desks and chairs. Um, and then in the next few years, what I'm just saying is in K-two, we'd like to replace those in the next few. We are gonna try to be just thoughtful about that. We try to use money that we didn't spend this last year. At the end, we kind of purchased one grade level's worth of furniture. Uh, things have been going well, but that seems to be going well. Jeremy and Bob have been great with it. So that's just one of the things that and actually making this
Any questions about the elementary? Are you, is there anything that could help the classroom?
Oh, you know, I
We're, we're coming with kids, so one
I put it in there. I, I, I agree with you. No, I put it in.
We did take it off because our hope is not that it's a full ask for next year that we kind of funded as much as we can with this year funding. So, um, we already moved the money from the O M account, which we don't have anymore. So that was gonna go into elementary student council. So we did find the clubs that were no longer in session and had funding available. We put it for this purpose. That's ready, we're getting quotes and packs. And then, um, you'll have representatives from student council coming in. The meeting is at March fourteenth.
I heard it's coming in March fourteenth.
March fourteenth is the one that they're shooting for, that they're gonna have a presentation, lay it all out for us. So, um, that's why we didn't put it in. Do you have questions about that?
I didn't want to, I, I wanted to be sure that it was it is. No idea. And I'll tell you, I mean, I'm surprised the student council, I'll give you some of the budget parts of this. Uh, we are
I don't think they'll watch.
Don't steal their thunder.
I'm not gonna give any detail, let them do that. But we have been working, uh, with our maintenance department. We've historically come out and looked at the site itself and we looked at the site work. Uh, media, it was a price. I thought it was reasonable, thinking toward a dimension topsoil, uh, place a fatter down to the middle about a foot down. The fatter it's placed down and the gravel it's placed down on top of that would be good shifts. And also be a sidewalk, or I guess we'd be a mowing spirit, is what you call this. It would work like a sidewalk with your offices that in. So you don't have to mow like this, you won't be able to maintain it well. So the preparation of that, he gave us a bill of five, I think it was about nine thousand dollars. Very Um, and we looked at different ways of, uh, funding the logs. Um, and then we wanted, there's two different options right now, what I think the kids are leaning on and I think what we're planning on leaning on is having lawn and logs. There's probably about five or six kids that have decided on lawn and just cut it in. They'll show the pictures of that. And if you create like a classroom environment with a chalkboard. And then another part of that same space where I used to like a teaching station, so you have a science experiment or you have, I think, you can have a teaching station and a place to set up your stuff with the kids.
Does the board know where, what space we're
One thing that we are, uh, we've been out walking around in the place. I know when the board discusses, uh, with Mr. Malasani, there is talk of having like a fence there. Um, there's pros and cons to that when you get in there and we look at when the layout. There is gonna be a chalkboard that'll go all the way across and it'll be semi, uh, boxed off. When you put the fence in it, there's probably something different. When I put it in there, kind of boxes it in, I don't know if it's gonna, I don't, I don't know if it's gonna feel like an outdoor classroom. Kind of makes it feel different. But we could do the site work. It's actually probably only a few poles. More where the chalkboard, the board would be, it'd be a little more offensive. So I would like to investigate that a little more. Uh, when we talked about the safety of that, um, there's probably pros and cons to that too. Um, we go outside all the time. There's actual entrances right into the building, right next to there. You go into the auditorium area, uh, right off that area. Uh, and we're outside doing science experiments and everything already. So I wouldn't say from a safety standpoint, I try some pros and cons. Uh, I do think having that, uh, like a camera system in there for kids after, after school out is a very smart idea and having a fob that a teacher can get in and out of that. And we did talk about even there's like a concrete pad where you can pull on an active board and have enough teachers. You're gonna, ultimately, you're probably gonna come up with classrooms doing the kids are gonna do a presentation of that. We've been doing the groundwork, like I always finish trying to see how we can afford it. So there is money available in those accounts. Then there's, there are parts of that that we're gonna have to purchase with the building budget, breaking back from the bottom. We've got a negotiation. That's why the kids, yeah, we, good luck seeing over this.
All right, middle, high school initiatives. So I think one theme, uh, here tonight that this slide will connect back to is the whole idea of what the transition feels like between the buildings. So having taken over as the, uh, principal six through twelve mid-year last year, uh, I really went through my first transition of bringing kids from elementary school over to the middle level. Uh, the elementary team actually does a pretty good job of building some data sets for us on their literacy work that they do at the elementary school. Uh, once kids get over to middle school, I think what we really need to be focused on right now is how do we build, uh, our own type of literacy intervention structure that allows us to really understand the difference between literacy interventions that would be delivered in tier one, which means by the classroom teacher, the English teachers, uh, versus the kind of intervention that might need to occur from a reading teacher. So we have one reading teacher, uh, six through twelve. And so for us, really needing to understand what our systems look like, building systems, that allow us to say, this is what we do when. Um, and making sure that classroom teachers understand the literacy development that is still very much necessary when we're talking about, uh, students in grades six, seven, and eight. I, I would say literacy is essential when we're talking about students, no matter their age. Uh, for me, literacy is a passion of mine. Uh, having been an English teacher prior to becoming an administrator and then a staff developer in the area of literacy in ELA for several years, uh, this is actually something that I think will be good for us to really look at, uh, where our kids are and what they need. So we don't currently have an assessment that we are using to measure literacy across the six through twelve. Six through eight in the, um, the special education department has been using the same Fattis and Canal level literacy assessment that the elementary school uses. That's not something that's been trained like faculty-wise. So you wouldn't find that we would be able to put our teachers in a classroom and say that this is our philosophy. So we're gonna begin looking at that, uh, six through twelve. You'll hear teachers of English regardless of the grade level saying that they really feel it necessary to know more about the teaching and reading than they've ever needed to know before. So basically in this literacy initiative, I think our first thing, uh, we've spent a lot of time this year looking at what our systems are and how we're getting things done. Uh, so we've got some, some tools that we've been using that we're gonna begin building some, uh, closely aligned monitoring tools to allow us to look at what our current model would allow us to produce. And we were actually putting it into more of a research-based model where we are tracking student progress and really keeping up with the intervention that's at play, how long the intervention's been at play, and how quickly we can close gaps for kids. So we're working on that right now, uh, across the spring semester with the support of our local BOSI's and of Katrina Hatch, our reading teacher in the building. So we use a, we use a couple of tools. We use iReady. Uh, we are finding that the kids are really just kind of burning out from iReady. So if you're a parent of a middle schooler, it's something that you, I'm shaking their head. Yes, the kids are, they wanna be done with that. It's a tool that is really good for them and they use it at the elementary level quite a bit. And by the time they get to us, they're just waiting for somebody to say that I don't have to do iReady anymore. Uh, so we're feeling like the results that we're now getting from iReady are not good indicators of students' grade level performance. They just don't match back to the assessments that we are using in the classroom uh, or to some of the screeners that we are deploying to see if that measure is a good measure for us. So we've been questioning that, uh, since we gave our first one in the fall. Uh, we're working right now with a little more, uh, curriculum-based measures that should help us a little bit to test whether we keep iReady, uh, or if we let iReady go as a tool for us. We also use a tool called Really Great Reading. That's something that is also used at the elementary level. Again, it doesn't have a wide level of, um, teacher use. It, it really kind of exists in some pockets across the middle level. So we wanna expand Really Great Reading this, this spring and make sure that if that is a tool that is gonna close gaps for us, that it's in the hands of the, of the right people. I would say big picture for us and why we need this to be an initiative is because across the six twelve, we really should be able to answer questions when parents are asking us about literacy and about our children's literacy growth. And as a system, I think you would put every teacher in this room right now. They would tell you that we don't really have a solid enough system that we would feel a hundred percent gung-ho tell you exactly what we need to know about your kids. We know a lot about your kids. But we would like to be able to show you a data set that helps us, uh, really make decisions about the kinds of intervention, uh, that they need. So we want something that feels very, very reliable and also allows us to look at how kids are performing and say that we can track that for, you know, three to four years and really watch gaps close and watch the kind of data that we showed you in the last, um, slide really change based on how our kids increase in literacy. So that's the first round of money that will be coming out of that high school, middle high school budget line this next year for making sure that literacy is a priority to us as we do staff development and build. We are always talking about increased course offerings. Uh, when I share with you that we hired a career in technical education at the middle level, uh, one of the things that we have been talking about is the ability to kind of expand those CTE course offerings. So we are looking right now to, um, try to get certification for a teacher at the high school that, uh, I, I believe based on the CTE criteria, that she will qualify for CTE certification in the area of human services, which would allow her to teach food and nutrition, which would put at least some of the components of family consumer science back on the table for us. Uh, so we are looking into that as a priority for us going into, into the summer and into a build next year. We have also hired a CTE teacher at the high school. One of our main, main goals is now to maintain our Project Lead The Way. Project Lead The Way is an engineering, or engineering courses really that we offer. That is, uh, you teachers have to be highly trained in order to teach those courses. And they either have to be trained through staff development prior teaching the course or now, Project Lead The Way is offering embedded training, which is very taxing, but doable. We are training right now in a course that we are teaching this spring, uh, the introduction to engineering and design course. So the numbers that I'm showing you there are really letting you know that in order to keep Project Lead The Way here in our district, uh, the way that we would like to see it over the course of probably the next year and a half, we're gonna spend very, very bad figure making sure that we have teachers trained, uh, to teach the course through. I'm looking at really being able to keep Project Lead The Way, we have to be thoughtful about who the folks are that are teaching it. So in other schools, you go find that some of the engineering courses are being taught by math and science, um, teachers alongside some of those career in technical ed teachers or technology teachers. So I'm really combing, uh, a base and a master schedule right now to see if there are ways that we can make sure that we build this and have it be something that is sustainable for us all the time. Uh, last, we have hired a new teacher who have chemistry, who needs to get through the AP chemistry, uh, training. See those there? This one is absolutely brand new to us. It's a conversation that we've been having, uh, for a couple of years now, uh, inside the athletic programs around adding strength and conditioning coach. Uh, we're feeling like this is something that we're getting closer as the community to feeling the need for. Whether we're talking about our, our students, making sure that our student athletes are safe when they're out in the field, or maybe more so what kids and families might be feeling in this moment is just our, our championship, our, we wanna win. And oftentimes when you're thinking about doing good on a sports team, you do need to be thinking about off-season, strength and conditioning. Uh, we also have students that maybe are not playing sports for us at We also have students that maybe are not playing sports for us at all, but they're hitting up our, our gym after school, our weight room after school. We currently staff that. So I would say four nights out of the week, the weight room is staffed and you will find kids in there that are doing off-season training or maybe they don't play sport at all and they're just using that, working alongside Mr. Henry to be well, to be physically healthy. So this would be an add for us. It's something that we've been talking about. We're brainstorming ways to maybe make this more cost-effective for us, but certainly something that we wanted to bring to attention. The numbers that you see there are actually the numbers that we use for our, our speed coaching staff. So we were just looking at the seasons and trying to give you an idea of if we were gonna build a coach that works a similar sort of structure to a bar speed coach, that's probably those season numbers. Questions about that? There are definitely some schools around us that you'll see, like I watch Penn Field on their social media, they actually have a training and conditioning coach. And you see exactly that, like coming out of their Twitter feed all the time, or the kind of challenges that they're posting to student body. And again, it's somebody that would have to be, you know, very knowledgeable in terms of making sure that our kids are getting what they need and they're safe in doing that. So we like it that to be expertise of our speed level coach to build this, this particular practice.
Dr. Chmalt, I would like to talk a little bit about the project. So anytime I get a chance to, as a board member, I would like to talk more about shared services outside of school. And of course, we said, I think the small school district, we are, we need to find ways to provide access. And I know we've talked about it before and I know the schedule is big, our, our schedule is, but just anything you can partner with some of our fellow districts.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we probably get that conversation with BOCs about whether or not, BOCs talked about Project Lead the Way at one time before. I think Super Ten Hall's wanting to speak more to that. I think a lot of times what districts are trying to do is keep most of their kids on their campuses, learning in their own classrooms. It's definitely been our focus. There are a couple of school districts that are a little more like us now than what we used to have. I would say the successes that we had nine through twelve during COVID, in terms of our kids being able to like keep a, keep a bell schedule and meet with teachers, we assume. There are a lot of schools around us that were like, hey, how did you do that? What did you do? And they're starting to move, I think we've got two partners right now that are, that are now block semester schedule. So that also offer Project Lead the Way. So that might be a conversation that we can start to have. It probably just by distance is still gonna be something that we would, we would still have a staff here for some of the hands-on components or you would be using so much time in the transition program.
How many students are currently in?
Oh, I don't know that off the top of my head. I could get, I could get those statistics for you.
And has come to some of the present, I mean, why of that?
It depends on the, it depends on the year and the course, right? So like EDD is our capstone course, so that's, that's the presentation that you're used to coming to. So kids can actually be taking EDD at different rates of time, right? So you might take EDD when you're a junior and there might have only been, you know, five kids in the class. Or you take it your senior year and there might be fifteen of them in there. So I would have to really get numbers for you to give you an idea of how many kids are currently projected to be in Project Lead the Way, stay in Project Lead. We're healthy right now in that IED class that we're offering for ninth grade. I think there are eighteen kids enrolled in that class right now. Yeah. I think too, one of the things we need to get better at is helping parents understand. So I added Project Lead the Way to my transition conversation in April, nine. Because I think if you're thinking your child isn't gonna be in engineering or they're not interested in engineering, like maybe people don't understand that CAD kind of runs underneath there, right? And so I have a student this year who's leaning more toward going into college toward like design in terms of being pretty creative stuff. CAD is gonna be pretty fundamental to her. So even thinking about some of these courses, is kids learning how to go from one side of the building? Like I've been focused more on the business side of the house, but I, I should probably go over and take at least one of these classes that are Project Lead the Way to better grow my skillset around project management, collaboration, the real creativity of design, taking something all the way to production. So I think it's a matter of that. We've been working in our course side at the high school to try to help kids see career clusters. And that just because I'm thinking, you know, I don't think I want this class, but I see that this class is connected to my career cluster. So the teachers are trying to help kids understand that where you might not have taken this class before, you might should think about it because it's connected to you long-term. So I see Project Lead the Way as being a piece, a component of that as we continue forward. Sharing is hard. I don't disagree with you when we're talking about, you know, small groups of kids, trying to keep them connected in a course. We could probably say the same thing though for some of the, you know, AP courses in terms of their enrollment. And I think as a school, we've just been very determined that we're gonna continue to offer these college dual enrollment classes.
And I think we should until, yeah.
Until we can. Yeah, I hear you. Any other questions?
Okay, so tonight, this, what I'm about to present is not include the administrative priorities that the administrators just presented. That'll be either next meeting, February twenty eighth, or March fourteen, we have the budget. Okay, so I want to hit upon is that mentioned just a second ago, this is not including any initiatives that the administrators just presented. That'll be on the February twenty eighth or the March fourteen budget. So the agenda tonight is, we'll quickly review the mission. Won't get into a lot of the belief statements, however, our listeners. So it has to be formed, develop this budget. That's exactly is our aim, just going back to our mission and our purpose. Why are we here? The budget guideline, which was more adopted a couple of meetings ago. If we have to make decisions where we're making cuts, either decisions made in criteria, which I have given you an example for the board to consider, where we actually have to go make cuts, how we would go about that as a board of education. And then we'll talk about thousands, five thousand, eight thousand, ninety thousand. Two propositions this year for the community to consider, and then preliminary tax gap information. So again, with our mission statement, something is, is the school community started to address in two thousand and eleven and twelve, and keep up with our mission statement. So again, we take, we take pride in providing safe, comprehensive, rigorous educational experiences in order for all of our students to graduate as ethical, responsible life owners for our college and iReady. So with respect to all of our beliefs, you see them there? Go back again, these will be our anchors in terms of our decisions that we're making as we develop twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school budget. So the calendar is, is marked. So even though February twenty eighth doesn't speak to an actual budget presentation, we probably, again, at least administrative budgets, we probably have some clarity with respect to health benefits, in terms of rate decreases and so forth. So we'll refine it on February twenty eighth. But the next big budget, which is nearly seventy percent of your budget, will be talking about the code, excuse me, the instructional codes. You see where we are for the remainder of this budget season. So again, I'm not gonna read these to you. These are not necessarily new. It's the board, we've modified and adjusted them over the years. Real quick, you know, we wanted, if we had to touch something, we wanted to make sure with respect to cutting, we want to make sure as far as away from student decision, very little impact on student achievement. You know, there may come a time in this budget season where we'll talk about what's mandated in terms of what is required for us to do and what has been just, you know, a service program. So what's mandated and what is not mandated make that is part of the criteria in terms of the cutting. Functions that can be absorbed and organized by reason by others. This is something that we've done an awful lot here. We often say that our administrators wear several hats, our teachers wear several hats. You're just not a teacher, you're also our, our chemical hygiene specialist in respect to our chemistry room or the homeless liaison and so forth. They were many, many hats. And that seems to be the case. When we have made cuts, really have made cuts to students, some people have picked up the role and responsibilities to fulfill the needs of our school community. And any programs that can be accomplished reasonably by other means. So this is when we typically look to get support from BOCs or other school districts to accomplish our, our goal set forth. So in the general support, we see an increase of nearly under seventy thousand dollars. And a big picture, we see general support, we're talking about the board education expenses, modest increase. Now this year, we've actually had a budget for the production of our board meetings, personnel and so forth, professional development for the board. My salary, my secretary's salary is in there, all the financial salaries in terms of our finance, accounts payable, and so forth. Other measures that are in this general support area are dealing with all our legal fees for our attorneys. Also with respect to our printing expenses for newsletters and budget newsletters, information like that. Also is your custodial staff, also your maintenance cleaners, mechanics and so forth, all of our utilities. And a big increase this year is in electric. If you look at your bill, it's probably went up a minimum of twenty-five or closer to thirty-three or thirty-seven percent. Same too here in our plant. Also, you're seeing here, any of the equipment supplies related to maintenance. When you look at all of that together, we lost our insurance and administrative charges for BOCs, you're looking at an increase of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Primarily, it's all contractual salary increases, inflation of course, and again, as I mentioned, substantial increase in electricity. Transportation expenses, again, your year fifty-five thousand dollars increase is primarily due to salary increases and the cost of fuel. If you recall at the very end last year, it increased to ten thousand dollars. Again, looking at how much we've used and so forth, we're looking at another substantial increase in fuel. See a modest increase of six point two four percent, again, inflation, salaries, and fuel costs. New services, this is our continuing ed program. I think it was a three hundred eighty-eight dollar increase, modest increase, and it's all based on salary. Four-year benefits, big hit this year. It's been two consecutive years with respect to costs for healthcare. For us, we're looking at a total increase of about three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars as we know it. Again, we think we'll be able to refine this number for our next meeting. But we're looking at an increase of three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars for healthcare. Overall, that whole category, you're seeing an increase of three hundred and fifty-two thousand. Fortunately, this year, our retirement expenses for TRS and ERS went down slightly, which is good. It's not, hasn't been normally the case most recently. But our biggest hit there is based on healthcare expenses. Debt service is basically the cost associated primarily right now with our, obviously our debt, but our bus, for banning for buses. You see an increase of nearly thirty thousand dollars. For propositions, as you see, it says, say, draft, school buses have gone up about thirty percent from, from last year. We think the number's coming closer to hundred sixty-eight, hundred seventy thousand dollars. But right now, we gotta have a draft forming at two hundred thousand. We're looking to purchase one school bus next year. The next is our vehicle equipment reserve proposition. Yes.
What's the oldest, awesome now that we created it?
So what necessarily be the oldest would be the, the buses in worst condition and I would have to check this out. I would definitely have that ready, ready to go for approval of propositions. But typically in the past, twelve, thirteen years old, they were one hundred twenty, eight hundred sixty thousand dollars.
I was just wondering where can, for your other school board, I think we're finally to the first one that will purchase.
Yes, yeah. Years ago when we started, how long you doing this, Chris?
Eleven, twelve.
Eleven, twelve years. We had the oldest fleet and the most unhealthy fleet, you know, we had twenty-some people working on our buses. Buses were twelve, eighteen years old, and were rodded from underneath. Engines were still going strong, we were decent coming, coming engines. Those things will run forever. Our frame and so forth was rodded out. We went from one of the oldest fleets not to one of the better fleets in our area. We put together a purchasing plan for those that have been around. And we've been able to fulfill that plan. But we are in great shape. We also did under repairs, greasing or weatherizing that, so we're getting a new bus out. So a lot of time left has gone into that and Mr. Rick here, the rest of our instrumental in making that happen. So with, again, one bus replacement, and I'll get the information for you on what we're gonna replace. The next is the vehicle equipment reserve proposition. So as I showed you in the backup notes, we have reached the limit of five hundred thousand dollars in the original equipment vehicle reserve that was approved by the community years ago. So we can no longer add money to that. We can expand it, but we can no longer add to that. So the recommendation, knowing what's coming down the pipe, with respect to electric buses, we're looking at three to four hundred thousand dollars per bus. Our goal is to move from the currently five hundred thousand, move to one million. What's remaining there is three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. That money will be transferred to that account. And again, it's not just for buses. It is for equipment, it's for our plow vehicles, it's for tractors, replacement of lawnmower, all the equipment that we have on campus. And we have an equipment repurchasing plan as well. So we, we have an idea of what to anticipate. We've been able to fund this well with the federal monies that we received over the last, last year anyways, for eighteen months. And our goal is to have the community approve this so that we're preparing our, our fleets and so forth for the future. To be frank with you, if we have to go from spending a hundred seventy thousand dollars for a bus to three hundred and fifty, would you be able to purchase a bus every year? It's inevitable by twenty thirty-two, you have to have all your, your fleet electric as we know today. And for twenty twenty-seven, we'll only purchase the combustible engine, again, as we know today. I think things will be pushed out, but either way, we have to prepare. So when you look at the major changes between the two, you see it's nearly six hundred thousand dollar increase from these five areas from the previous year. So the capital update project, things that we're looking to do is to replace the four HVAC heat tech units in the elementary school office. If we're able to get a fit, this two cars cost has went up substantially. A fifth will be replacing the HVAC unit in the nurses' office. That is our intent of that hundred thousand dollar capital project. Again, we're receiving aid on that, roughly eighty-six percent of that money will return to us in aid form next year. Now let's go back to that. We are also looking at a capital project for twenty twenty-five that we've invoked this year in the center of twenty-three. So if, whatever we do in the elementary office and nurses' office, it will be able to be reused or used in its current fashion. We are looking at the entrances, making them more secure. This is all work will be intentioned. So as we know, right now, our tax levying limit, we look at that. So as we know right now, our tax levy limit, we look at that formula that is over here in your right-hand column. This year, our tax levies, we know we will be able to go out at one point nine three. We will be looking at that over the next two weeks. By March first, we have to submit it to the Department of Taxation, from the budget to the New York State. Um, but right now, that's the best information that we have. We looked at the former letter exclusions in our pilots. We had a relatively larger pilot down this year. This year, we're at fifty-three thousand dollars. Last year was twenty-eight. A year from now, it's going to be seventy-five thousand dollar pilot. So our tax levy will actually be lower. We're anticipating a lower tax levy limit even in a twenty-four, twenty-five school year. That may be the year that we talked about as a board, we have fewer retirements, we would have to go off a super majority, and everything's coming to fruition as we look, look at this. Yes.
Where in that formula is, like, that part of that?
Nothing. So in essence, how I think, there is nothing in there for the inflation. So it's C P I or two percent, whatever's lesser. So everybody thought in New York State, you could go up two percent in a single year. That's a tax of two percent, two percent. It's not never been true. It's two percent or C P I, whatever's lesser. Now, we know this year, C P I is closer to six point five, seven point oh, with respect to inflation. Uh, so therefore, now you have to use the two percent. It's, uh, tax level is limited based yet. Wait, your school district's earnings can have a hundred one percent this year. Because they have pilots typically for communities that either have wind, turbine, turbines, things of that nature, or very large pilots coming onto the book. So this year, we're looking at one point nine three. And again, there's every anticipation going into the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we're pushing to that one. But, uh, again, we could have some growth in our community and see how that will land. Questions?
I want to comment about the, I'm here to comment about the, uh, executive budget system. Was that better or less?
Well, again, so I'll, I'll give you a, 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 so this year, of all the years, we've gathered more for evidence since, uh, January twenty twenty, it is our best foundation aid, granted foundation aid, that has only been in place since two thousand eight. Best aid that this district has received, uh, in my short time here. And, uh, we're right around that six hundred, a lot of six hundred and fourteen thousand dollar increase, state aid for foundation. So I'm optimistic that's, we need this year, because as a board, we talked about this year, we're going to do the override. And basically, Chris, you made a good point. That is based on inflation for the most part for us. That's why we receive the money. In the past, we've always been the state harmless school district, or we receive the two percent, the three percent, whatever the, the lowest amount a school district will receive. We've always been that district. And this year, we're a little bit, last year, we're a little bit underfunded. We're making us whole, as well as the inflation, is where you get to that amount. Again, we're punching the numbers and sure everything is right. We speak to revenues towards, towards the end of the budget process. Because what the state necessarily provides is, you know, must have all those advocates. And another thing too, that we're cautioning us out of the question of BOCs, if we do a lot of our financial stuff, is, is that this will not be your benchmark. So in other words, in past years, when we received aid, that was your starting point for the following year. There's language in this bill, this doesn't necessarily mean that we could receive six hundred fourteen thousand dollars, that's a starting point for the next year. So it could go back to our norm, which is a new point, to be a hundred twenty, a hundred forty thousand dollars, or they could even reduce that six hundred fourteen thousand to some sort of a gap elimination adjustment that they used to use in the past. So there's no promises that this revenue source will be here next year. I'm certain when we go through legislative process in the budget, that our legislators will be supporting us and say this should be the starting point to, to put a long-term financial plan together. But I'll get into revenues more specifically here in a couple of minutes.
Dan Ross. Thank you. New business item number four, regarding, um, possession and income rights for senior citizens, persons with disabilities and limited income. Whereas section six, whereas section four, six, seven, the New York State Real Property Tax Law authorizes the county, town, and school district to grant the real property tax possessions of senior citizens owning real property. And whereas section four, five, N C, the New York State Real Property Law authorizes the county, town, and school district to grant the real property tax exemptions, persons with disabilities, limited incomes owning real property. And whereas the statute provided income limits for various levels of the residential real property tax exemption. And whereas, looking to the counties, approved an increase to the income limits for the thirty percent levels to be increased from twenty thousand dollars to twenty-eight thousand dollars. For the five percent levels, to be increased from twenty-eight thousand, three hundred ninety-nine dollars to thirty-six thousand, three hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. And whereas these increases appear to be reasonable and appropriate. And whereas it's proved, the county, town, and school district, the same income levels for property exemptions for each individual property, is hereby resolved for the education of Calvin Monk Central School District, hereby approves an increase in the fifty percent level from twenty thousand dollars to twenty-eight thousand dollars, from twenty-eight thousand, three ninety-nine to thirty-six thousand, three ninety-nine, or ten-nine, for the five percent level of real property tax law, section four, five, N C, and four, six, seven, real property exemptions. To be consistent, we approve everything in the county income levels. Motion please? Second. Any further discussion? This is what we've presented during the fourth meeting. Both of you are for it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried. New business number five, draft of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school calendar.
Yeah, so we, in the district, we provide you a draft, and opportunity to reflect our next board meeting in February. We look for approval. This is a calendar for our entire BOCs, so that as soon as they attend the BOCs program, they may be for alternative aid, C T V, or special aid program, has limited impact on terms of the number of days which they would have in session. This calendar aligns with their BOCs. Nothing really unique about it, um, other than it's, 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 I think, I think the holiday break for Christmas is a little bit longer, one day longer than previous year. But a lot of it has to do with working equal eight is, has to do with the solar eclipse, when it occurs, going to be in our region. And right now, uh, Monroe County and many of the counties argue they're going to have a super Santa Copper Day or a Day of Vacation, because the implication of so many people coming from wherever. I believe Lexington County in the northern part were pretty fortunate, the best. In the bu, bu, best view is Buffalo region, and we are second. So they expect hundreds of thousands to come to our area. So there'll be a Day of Vacation as well. So it's the same length of the school year, it's always a hundred eighty-six days for our students, excuse me, a hundred eighty days for students, a hundred eighty-six days.
Any, any questions off the draft? Hey, uh, new business number six, approval of out-of-state field trip, resolved in board education, out of the recognition of Superintendent. Approved the class of twenty twenty-eight out-of-state trip to Washington, D C in May of twenty twenty-four. Further regulations set forth by Board Policy Number eight, four, six, oh, field trips. Motion please?
Make it.
Second. Discussion?
Again, the key here is your approval so that a seventh-grade class can currently begin fundraising with Dr. Chanel, her team, and also for parents to plan for those fundraising activities. But to the expensive trip, that's why having two years to plan for that. You can see the trip is in May. Two, the past, you know, last two years, it was in October, a little bit later to give her, give you more time to fundraise for that. But we're excited to get that back in Washington, and Dr. Chanel, certainly making it happen.
Third, Board Policy, the, 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 the amount, what percentage do you require for it?
Twenty-five percent. And the ratio for checkered, or one for a tenant, same-sex male females. Females, we need to have men, females. Dr. Chanel, her team will, will have it. I'll give you this, it's going to be posted, beginning, it's two years out. Just gave you a sample, uh, jet itinerary, what it might look like. It will be refined a little bit. Don't know the answer to that. Uh, the likelihood is, is probably not, knowing that what they did to high school, the expenses, just to a foreign language trip, senior trip, others, and then the like.
That's exactly the conversation. Honestly, Mr. McConnell and I have fallen around and hung around with this, because we'd be imagining that maybe the kids that didn't get a chance to go are going to start coming down to our office saying, what about us? Um, so we'll, we have an idea, or what about us?
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried. And executive session, resolved in board education, adjutant executive session at seven thirty-five P M to discuss the employment and employee history of particular persons, confidential student records protected by protocol. Motion please? Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Move ahead, sir. Number six, resignation of maintenance mechanic. Number seven, resignation of cleaner. Number eight, approval of sub tutorate. Number nine, appointment of floor advisor. Number ten, appointment of computer service assistant. Number eleven, approval of teacher and clerical substitute. Number twelve, appointment of mentor. Number thirteen, appointment of civil service title, building maintenance supervisor, superintendent of building economics. Number fourteen, appointment of mentor. Number fifteen, approval of schoolwork student. Motion please?
Aye.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Series. The German, resolved in board education, the German meeting on February fourteen, twenty twenty-three, at nine oh nine P M. Motion please?
Make it.
And second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Have a good night.
Thank you, everyone.